Okay, so let's take our seats and we'll get started in just a minute. One, two, three. Who are we missing? Sandy. Kirk, I have a question for you. Okay, I think we're ready to get started. And as we get started, I was just clarifying if the fire district needs to do any type of a roll call. My understanding is you have a meeting following and that you'll do your roll call at that time. And so in that this is a special city council meeting, we will start by opening the meeting. And then I believe, I think we're live streaming. Are we on? We're good to go. Okay. You know, typically, we open in prayer and a pledge. And even though this is a unique environment, I think we should go ahead and follow suit. And so, since I'm standing here, I'm going to pray and then we're going to go over. And Doug, were you going to offer? Come up here. That is awesome. Thank you. So this is our finance director, Doug Racine, and he's going to, boy, that's instant in season. And Doug, thank you. He's going to open us in prayer and will lead us in the pledge. And then we'll move to roll call. Thank you.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, we come before thee today with gratitude in our hearts for the opportunity we have to serve, with a prayer in our hearts for those who are struggling and need thy help. We pray at this night, this night, that thou will guide our thoughts and actions, that we might be guided in the affairs of the city to help resolve and come to the best decisions for the benefit of all. We thank thee again and seek for thy blessings upon those who are in the most need and ask for thy blessings in all things. And we say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we'll do roll call.
Rodriguez. Brunner. Mutsi. Levi. Haverfield. And Bauer.
So as we step into the agenda this evening, I am not aware of any proposed amendments to the agenda. Is anyone else aware of any proposed amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we will just move in. We don't have a consent agenda this evening. I would like to open very briefly before, and I don't know who is after me. Is it Kirk or Anne? Are we going, it's Kirk?
Sure.
Sitting right there. Nothing like not being able to see you and it's the mask. I can't believe it. Before we get started, I just want to make a one brief comment, well, actually, two, and not planned. Are you going to talk about your firefighters that just got home and that left? Would you do that? Okay, when you, I think that's important because we have amazing firefighters in our community and Kirk can share with you what they've been up to. But I am so proud of them. I have to say, I am extremely thankful for our team and proud of them. As we move into the agenda this evening, and we talk about the redistricting and the fire district, I just want to make it really clear what the anticipated outcome of these discussions are intended to be. And that is that we don't have an agenda and we're seeking to make a wise decision to collaboratively come together and identify how we best meet the long-term needs of the citizens of our community. And I don't know what the right outcome is, but what was important was that we provided a very objective look, that we turned over the various stones to see what was under there. Anne Westcott, I appreciate your work, your objectivity and you digging deep. And I look forward to listening tonight to what you've identified. I appreciate Kirk, your leadership. It's been stellar in a very busy time. And I thank you. What's wonderful is to be aligned together to say, we want to do what's right and what's best. We need to provide for the needs of our firefighters, right? How do we care for the people that serve our community? And how do we provide for our community in a season where dollars are tight and we're looking at even potential tax reductions? How do we best create an environment for long-term sustainability? So I just appreciate the objective look that's been underway over these last number of months and the work that's been done. And I look forward to the discussion today. So Kirk? Chief, I should say. Excuse me.
That's all right. Thank you, Mayor, and council and commission and union leadership. We appreciate all of you. I'm going to step back a little bit and just take my mask off because then you can hear me better. So I appreciate all of you coming here. I know that each one of you already has a lot on your plate. And so to take a night out is, for investing into the fire department is very special and it's not lost on us. So I know that I've said that to you before in an email, but I can tell you that each one of the gentlemen in the back of the room acknowledge your schedules. And we did make Doug miss a workout tonight, so we owe him, he said. So to brag a little bit about our firefighters, first of all, we did have a Boston Marathon finisher this morning. Jeff Mucci ran the Boston Marathon virtually this morning. A professional time of two hours and 52 minutes, which is insane. So I don't know how he does it with the schedule he worked, but he does, he's dedicated to his craft on the other end of his personal life. So congratulations, that was pretty awesome. I wish, we would have been more involved. We were busy getting ready for this and I wanted to drive out there, but I have no idea where he's running because he's virtual. For our firefighters, we did have three firefighters that we deployed as a part of a task force down to California in mid-August. And they were there for just over, I think, total of 23 days with travel. They just returned home Saturday evening. And then within an hour of that, or within an hour prior to that, the state called again and said, we hear your guys are coming home. What do you think about deployment? They need resources in Oregon. So this morning, after we had everything maintenance and serviced and did a quick check of our personnel, we sent two new crews to Springfield, Oregon. And so we sent two wildland rigs there with another task force that contains Post Falls, North Idaho, and then two Western Sand Hollow units that are heading over that way. So that's mostly for structure protection. So they'll be trying to protect the homes that are being currently endangered by fire all over. I don't know if you've seen the pictures from Oregon, but it just is mind-blowing to think that you'd have to deal with that. So we're very proud of them. And I know that that's a long time away from their families, but I was telling the mayor this morning, I honestly think that each one of us signs up to do that service, to be a service. And oftentimes, as most of you know, 65% of our calls are EMS in nature and they get pretty regular where we are going on sick people. And so to go be a part of a large service that is, it's dire and needed, almost renews the spirit of service in our, you see these gentlemen and women come back with a renewed sense of commitment to what we do and understanding that their families did sacrifice and we're appreciative. But I'm always proud of our people. And it does make me proud when I know that we have people at San Francisco and Springfield and they set the tone. So we always get great feedback. We get emails from the organizations they work with telling us how professional Nampa is. And so, yeah, very proud. When I first became chief, the mayor did ask me to really dig in and look at the sustainability. What are some of our options for the sustainability of the fire service here in Nampa? We had watched over a period of about 13 years as we slowly saw a decrease in our response time and our capabilities to reach our calls in a proper amount of time, whether it was our goal or whether it was the standard, they both were decreasing. And we have done this effort once in the past. It was during a time of transition of our department. And I didn't want to do that internally. I thought that a third-party perspective that was objective and didn't have any, anything but to look at what was, what the numbers were and give us the facts. So we were familiar with Anne through our impact fee studies. She came highly recommended and then we found out she had Ozzy and that makes it even better. And so I'll introduce Anne. And I know that you guys have another meeting to get to, so we will try and stick to the time. But again, appreciate you all being here. And if you have any questions, I know we left some papers there for you. We will be addressing any questions. If they don't get asked in this room, you can write them down and we will make sure they do. So Anne.
Okay, is this, so I have this on and this? Okay. Welcome, you all. Thank you for coming. We really couldn't imagine having this conversation over Zoom. I tried to do a meeting with 12 community members in Gem County last week and they kept turning off their video. So a couple of times I had to say, are any of you still here? Because I wasn't sure if I was just talking to myself. Plus, this is a complex issue and your feedback is critically important. I would like to just quickly have us go around the table and the back and the side just to introduce, so we know who all is in this room, because this is a lot of significant input. And you already know the chief. I'm going to start introducing Ozzy. Ozzy is my business partner, Ozzy Greppentrog, where I am known for charm and hilarious jokes. Ozzy is known for a Boston Marathon-level financial analysis capability. He and I met when we were both working with the city of Boise and then we have consulted in a lot of capacities as well. And anytime I don't understand anything with money, I make him explain it to me over and over and over again in the most simple terms so that I can be able to articulate it to other people. And I'm amazed he still takes my call, actually. But I really, really trust him and I appreciate him being with here tonight. So we'll move around the room, just who you are and maybe who you're representing tonight.
My name is Alvin Swift. I'm president of Nampa Firefighters Global Forum.
I'm Pat Solberg. I'm the safety committee, Pat Solberg, administrator and also the director of safety.
I'm Cleo Miller, I'm Nampa Fire Commissioner.
Bill Puckney is ready for the Nampa Fire Protection District.
Roger Allen, Commissioner.
Richard Davies, former deputy chief of Nampa Fire, currently directing director of the Nampa Fire District.
I'm Tom Seem, Director of Police for the City of Nampa. Randy Adams, Nampa City Council.
I'm Sandy Eva.
I'm Warren, Nampa City District.
Frank Wopple, Nampa Fire Protection District.
Amy Lachey, Nampa City Council.
Mr. Roderick, Nampa City Council.
Ray Feller, Nampa City District.
Anne, we're coming in.
And yes, go to the side there.
I have a question.
We're also more interested in taxpayer.
Larry Olmsted, he's a taxpayer.
Amy, well, the taxpayer and engagement manager.
Maybe it was not always paying.
All everyone's a citizen now.
Yeah, Anne, the chief of Nampa.
Roger Johnson, Fire Department.
Amy, have Nampa City District.
Ricky W., Chief of the Nampa.
Jeff Lachey, Chief of the Nampa.
Great, did we get everyone? And our fabulous AV team in the back of the room. Thank you very much. Speaking of their fabulousness, I've been known to wander and use my arms a lot, so I got this fancy microphone on my lapel. I keep telling them that women don't have pockets in their pants, so there's no place to put these things, but you get that? Yeah. So it looks awkward. I asked them for a Madonna-like headset and Chief Adams will not let me have expensive things anymore, so didn't get that. Speaking of Chief Adams, he did these lovely posters of all of the slides. We did not realize we would be in a room quite this large. So I don't know if you can read those, but I cannot read them. But they are up for if you feel the need to wander, you might want to go look at them. They are the slides that you have in front of you. But they really are beautiful and we will use them for some public outreach meetings if that is the direction that we go in. Also, you have post-its. I put some very vibrant post-its at your place. I'm sure you'll come up with a lot of questions. I am happy for you to just raise your hand whenever you have a question. I'm going to have to bring the mic and hold it for you because it's, we need to record the meeting. But I can do that swiftly and with charisma, I'm sure. So feel free to interrupt, but if you don't want to and we don't get a chance to your questions, I'd like to collect those post-its at the end, put your name on them, so that I can make sure that all of the questions are researched and addressed within a soon amount of time. All right. So when we were brought into this project, as the mayor said, the most sustainable solution, the most sustainable solution for fire service delivery. And my question always as an analyst is, because Ozzy and I just like solving problems. We like really knotted up problems that we can kind of peel back and figure out how to respond to. What's the most sustainable way to do what? Well, we need, we're having a problem. Our problem is we can't afford all of these stations. I said, well, that's not the problem, that's just a challenge that you have. What is the real problem? Why do you need these stations? Well, we have declining levels of service. I forgot my clicker. This is not my clicker. Yeah, good job. Maybe. Is this the clicker?
That is.
There we go. Okay. All right, so the declining level of service is what we were concerned about. That's what we were trying to sustain is the level of service. Who cares? Who cares about the level of service? Well, the people who are invested in the level of service in the fire department and within the fire district are the residents, the businesses, and anyone who might need a paramedic or someone to put out a fire. We know from community surveys over the last three or four years within the city of Nampa that the residents highly value their fire service. It's always within the first one to three priorities for budget, the most highly satisfied service that is provided by the department. And while the question was not asked of the residents, do you expect that we continue the level of service? Many of, let's just take it from the interested or otherwise taxpayers over here. Are you interested in continuing levels of service? Is that important to you? Yes, at least it's important to Amy. And so make sure if she calls, get over there real fast. Okay, so the question, though, is level of service. We want our level of service to remain high, to remain good. So then my question is, well, what's good? How do we know what a good level of service is? About 15 years ago, when I started working with fire departments, and I worked throughout all sorts of municipal service levels, different departments, so I know just enough to be dangerous about pretty much everything. I also am a highly suspicious person and I make people prove to me what they say is true, like poor Ozzy. So initially, when I started working with fire and they would say, well, we need this and we need this and we need this because we need to be able to respond in four minutes. I would say, awesome. Why four minutes? And they would answer, because that's what the standard is. And I would say, awesome. Why is four minutes the standard? And at an unnamed other fire department, they actually had a really hard time answering the question for a while until I kept pushing and pushing. I said, what is level of service? Well, it did. I'm very fast. Thank you. Level of service. Well, level of service is response time. Thank goodness we're talking about the fire department here because they have such a very narrow lane. They do, of course, prevention and training and a lot of pieces that build into the level of service. But people come help you not die and people come help your house not burn down, right? It's pretty much what they, terribly important, guys, terribly important, but pretty linear, right? We don't have 18 different services. We're just talking about how fast people can get to you. So I said, okay, explain to me the ideal amount of time. Well, industry standards for firefighting is that that first engine's going to get to you in four minutes. That means travel time of four minutes plus about a minute of dispatch and a minute or so of turnout time. So we want them to be there in about six minutes, 20 seconds. Now, if your house is on fire, you want another engine to show up because apparently they don't just let one crew of three people go in and save your entire structure. It's something about safety, right? Safety, yes. And then they need water and all of these other things and food, I think snacks show up, but some don't. Snacks, snacks and water show up, yes. So in eight minutes, if you want someone to actually enter your structure that's burning, you need to have two engines on scene and all their people and all their equipment and maybe even a tender, right? So four minutes makes, you understand four minutes? You understand eight. But this one was really interesting to me. This graph, which can't read on the screen either, thank goodness you do have it in front of you, shows that after eight minutes, what happens? This is the interactive part of today. Larry Olmsted, what happens in eight minutes? You are going to rue the day you showed up to this meeting.
It was 20 minutes.
Okay, I'm not talking about your specific issue. Okay, forget you. There are movies about this. Flashover, yes. Flashover. In eight, after eight minutes, that fire's not going to be contained to your garage. It's now going to be burning down your whole house. Oh, I said, eight minutes, having two engines? Compelling. I was compelled by that bit of explanation. And I said, well, what else do you guys do? Well, we take paramedics out to your EMS call. One thing I want to clarify is that Nampa firefighters, also paramedics, so they're going to get to the scene first and they're going to provide, BLS or ALS? They're going to provide advanced life support. Yes, I couldn't figure out what the S did for. Advanced life support until the ambulance gets there. So Canyon County Paramedics District would be who follows them up and they will take you to the hospital or the mall of your choice. What we need to know about why four minutes is important, I'm going to not let Frank answer this. Who would like to say why is four minutes important for a paramedic to get to you?
I could have a heart attack.
Yes. I could have a heart attack right here. Well, not here, because there are actually people who are trained. I could have a heart attack at my home and within four to six minutes, my brain starts dying, which apparently is a bad thing. And every minute thereafter, my mortality increases by 10%. And mortality increasing is a bad thing, right? We don't want increasing mortality. I'm going to die soon or have irretrievable damage. And that's just a cardiac arrest. If I'm in a trauma accident and I am bloodletting, there's a certain amount of time that that needs to be addressed as well. To this, I say, compelling. So the first test was met. I get the four-minute thing. Four-minute response, probably a good idea. So then the question is, what do we know about response time? What are the factors that contribute to response time being what it is? It could be the road condition, it could be the amount of congestion. In some communities in the valley, it's the fact that there are no bridges over rivers. So there are things that make the time longer. But I really want you to look at this map in your packets and on the screen. Did I get it on the screen? Yes. Okay, fire departments locate stations and they're not just the stations, it's the stations, the apparatus and the people, three parts that have to go together. They locate them in service areas or districts where they can respond within that four-minute travel time, ideally. You try not to make the circles overlap because that's kind of excessive spending, right? Although, take me back to a comment I was thinking of earlier. Level of service is really what you're willing to pay for, right? I mean, the perfect level of service would be I have my own engine, my own crew and my own ambulance. And they just follow me around wherever I go. But I can't afford that, so I join with other people in my community to make sure that there's a little more fiscally sustainable approach to all of this. Okay, so you don't want overlap, but you also don't want what? Gaps. Gaps are bad. And on this map, when Chief Davies gave it to me for impact fees a long time ago, I said, well, chief, there seem to be some holes. He said, that is the problem, Anne. There are these holes. And I said, well, what happens if I live here? He says, well, if you live here and you call 911, we'll probably dispatch someone from Station Two over to you. Great, well, while they're busy taking care of my brain death, what if someone has a call in District Two? Well, maybe we'll send someone from One down to Cover Two. Okay, well, now we're taking people farther away from their district, right? You know this, sir? Yes. So you're having to drive further and it's probably taking more time. Are you getting anxious at this point? A lot of anxiety coming in? No, but you probably are, actually. Okay. Yeah, it's usually Larry that I do this to you, so I'll try to stay over to the side there. All right. So one of my questions to Chief Davies was, well, I mean, is it just like me calling from this gap area over here or is it 10 of me's? How many me's are calling from these gaps? He says, well, in 2019, over 3,000 calls came from within these gap areas. I said, who are these people? Do we really care about these people? Apparently, the mayor cares about these people. And I believe the elected officials care about the people. And the people moving into Nampa care about themselves. And so that's where I started getting it. I was compelled by my brain death and the fact that my carefully time-laid and made scrapbooks of my children, actually, only one of them has a scrapbook, the other one still has a bunch of pictures in a box because who has time for that? That is what compelled me. We've got a problem here. What is the answer to this problem? Stick something in the gap, right? And that something would be a station. Well... I'm really bad at this.
Question for you.
Yes.
We talked about eight minutes, then the city limits of Nampa, or eight minutes to get to someone outside.
You are psychic because that is actually the very next slide.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, councilman. Awesome. Segue into the next slide, which is, first, since apparently we care about a lot of the people, not just the ones in District Two. How long is that? Right, because that's the question, right? Okay, there's a gap and there's a lot of people calling from the gaps and the map starts getting colored red, but is that a problem? We need to confirm if that's a problem. So we start looking at actual data. And we say, well, if four minutes travel is what we'd like, what are we doing right now? In the city, five and a half minutes travel. So it's over our objective. In the district, over seven minutes travel. So it's way over. And if you take seven minutes and you add the dispatch time and the turnout time, what have we reached? Flashover. We're at that eight, we're past eight minutes there. You know, but those are people in the district and, I mean, Cleo, didn't you expect to have things be slower out there in the rural area? I thought he did, so. So, so seven minutes. So your question, Council Chair, how long is it taking in the district versus the city? The average being about six minutes travel time. So that means we're now at eight minutes, 17 seconds of actual total time. What I am also interested is seeing what it used to be. Do people notice a difference? 20 years ago, travel time was much closer to the four minutes. It was four and a half, six and a half in the district and an average of 4:45. So 20 years ago, there was a better level of service, if we're measuring it that simply. God, I keep picking up your, sorry, that's your recorder. It's not my clicker. So the total response is what we're really looking at. 2007, just under six, seven minutes total response. From the moment I have my heart attack, assuming someone is right there to call, goes to dispatch, people jump in, there are turnouts, they're on the engine and they come get me in seven minutes. But today it's eight minutes and 17 seconds. Again, that's a value judgment. Councilmember Levi.
To put that statement in context, though, our fire department's quality has not changed the level of service. It's as the city has grown, has increased the level of service.
You are also psychic because that goes into the very next question, which is, it's the two of you. You've got an aura here, yes. Please pay attention, Doug, because you're in line.
Is that the county? Eight minutes?
Eight.
City of Napa.
Eight minutes is the dis, no, eight minutes and 17 seconds is the average of the district and the city combined. So if we take all the calls, the average was eight minutes and 17 seconds.
So does that factor in? Can it occur?
Nothing to do with the paramedics. This is just Nampa Fire Department apparatus and people responding to calls in the city as the fire department, responding to calls in the district as a contracted service provider. Excellent question. Councilmember Levi, did I? No, that was your point. Your point is very well taken. I said back in the beginning that level of service in the fire department is not just two things. It's not just responding to my heart attack or to my burning garage. It's also making sure that those things don't happen to begin with. So our fire marshal here, who escaped from the city of Boise, came to the Nampa Fire Department. His job is to make sure that things don't burn to begin with. And that means when Patrick's trying to hand out Amazon's building permits, the fire marshal says, no, 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 do it again. We have someone who's making sure that we're following codes, that inspections are done, that we're asking for sprinklers in certain facilities so that we're reducing the fact that it might even happen in the beginning. Training, critically important. So you are right, no matter how long it takes for them to get there, once they're there, you have exemplary firefighters who are trained to the highest standards. The gap is there are less things they can do to save someone if it's been too long, correct? I'm sorry, but you're in a red shirt and you're right here and you're firefighter-y. So is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So they can be the very best, which they are, and if they can't get there in time, my body just falls apart and they can do the best that they can and you probably can pull miracles out of your hat, but you may not be able to do that forever. Right. Poor Adam, he's never going to come to one of these again. I've lost it, I keep losing it. Okay.
Do your pants need pockets?
You're funny. He says, my pants need pockets. Yes, they do. I'm going to have to sew on some patches or something. Okay, so this is all data, right? I mean, this is all data that can be interpreted a lot of different ways and I love the questions that are being asked because it's the same kind of questions I was asking. Well, why is this important and do we care? And I don't mean to seem uncaring by asking that, but I like to kind of pose the question of, is this bad enough that we should do something about this? This is another thing that happens, remember when I said if I'm pulling someone out of District 2 to respond to my Southwest call and then someone from 1 has to go to 2, at a certain amount of time, we're stacking calls. So people are waiting. And that trend line shows you that that's happening more and more and more. In fact, what did I write down? I think 3,000, over 20 years. We've increased by 3,000 times that a call, that there are stacked calls. You'll notice on some of my slides that I didn't make because Chief Adams is awesome at this and he makes this. Well, and actually he copied them from Chief Davies. So either way, they're better than what I could do. There's this little blip at the end of the trend lines in some of the charts that you have and that is a representation of a program called Pro-QA that essentially just means they're not going to go to a facility that has a nurse there. Am I right? Yeah. So we saw a drop off and then we'll start to trend again. So I wouldn't really worry about that dot. That's not going to measurably make a difference in the conversation. Okay, increasing call volume. Oh, sorry, that was me. It's not only that it's taking longer to get there, it's that there are more and more calls. This is an easy one to see. Significant increase in the number of calls over the last 20 years. This goes back to Councilmember Levi's question. First of all, the firefighters can do an excellent job once they get there and once they get there, it just has to do with how many minutes it takes to get there. More and more people are calling because why? Why are there more calls? Are people more accident prone in Nampa or? Growth. Growth. A lot of people have come here in the last 20 years. So naturally, you're going to have more calls. Then we go over to this next slide, which is, well, I guess my question would be, well, if this is the worst it will ever be, we'll just stop here and deal with this. But as the impact fee goddess of the city of Napa, I know that you have another layer of a problem, which is you guys are so awesome that everyone wants to move here and they plan to and this is what we think you'll be dealing with. Just in the next 20 years here, 70,000 more people in the district and the city boundaries. So that's got to increase those calls, right? All right. So my takeaway, because again, when the mayor said, I want you, I want you, chief, to analyze the sustainability of the fire service. My question was, well, what are we trying to sustain? Well, we're trying to sustain this level of service that we currently have that's worse than it was before, but it's what we have today and we're making it work, but we're really worried about it getting worse. The worst part is as you continue to grow and because you're not growing in the center of town, there's geographic spread in the growth pattern. If you don't have new stations to fill in the holes and then you add more calls and longer response times, every six years, we're basically adding another minute of response time. It's an increased threat to life and property. Yes, Councilmember Levi?
The minute for every six years goes back to one of those tables where I counted how many minutes had been added and divided it by the number of years so I could figure out, oh, about every six years, we were increasing by a minute. So is that assuming more sprawl?
It's cumulative. Yes, exactly. More sprawl. I mean, obviously, if you build a lot of infill, which you have as you're building up your downtown, those are increased calls as well, but those are increased calls that are right, is that Station 5 downtown?
Station 1.
Station 1. So, yeah, 1 being the first one. Okay. Infill is good fiscally. We know when we've talked about the fiscal impact because the stuff is already there. So it's a little more cost effective that way. Although downtown, they're building higher, so you have different kinds of apparatus and different kinds of training that you need. But yes, the problem is that you're just growing, there are more people living outside of where the station coverage areas are. So there's a lot of things you could do about this, right? You could put a moratorium on any building permits in areas outside of a fire station. In fact, the city of Kuna basically did that two weeks ago when they said, no, we're not going to permit you to build these 2,500 homes out by the Falcon Crest Golf Course because our fire district cannot get there in time. Does no one read the statesman anymore? Anyone? Did anyone hear about that? Okay, the mayor heard about it, that's good. You probably have people to tell, you have people to tell you what's important in the news.
Amy Baldwin tells you. She sent us one today.
Yay, Amy. Yes. So that's technically a way to solve this problem, is to not let more people be demanding these extra stations. And here's the part where I say, I have no investment in the answer to this problem. Ozzy and I just think it's cool to solve complicated problems and I love trying to imagine that there are lots of options to a problem. So we went into this wanting to really see what are the reasonable ones. From one end of, well, just don't let people build in areas where there aren't stations to, well, what if you deploy differently from the stations that you already have, which we know they're already doing by putting some squad cars in stations, just kind of mini engines that allow people to get out to medical calls primarily and to replace old ladies' batteries in their fire alarms, right? I know that's part of it as well. So that you don't have to take an engine on every call, but that's not actually going to solve the whole problem. So don't let people build, deploy your apparatus in a slightly different way, build the stations. But there's just one second. There's one more option. What is the one more option? Whoops, I'm not there yet. Councilmember Haverfield.
My question is, why isn't Canyon County?
You can't touch it. You're COVID-ated. I have to hold it for you.
So Canyon County Plan Review, they're the ones that would either provide or require building to be self-suppressing if it's of a certain size or would be restrictive of growth. So again, I'm an elected official for the city, not the county.
Right.
So why aren't they at this meeting and involved in the conversation?
Because the bad news here is that that gap that I'm pointing to is in the city limits.
Well, yeah, we recognize it to be for another fire station within our city limits, but as long as the city limits don't grow, its response time within the city limits are going to be pretty much understood and maintained. Growth is happening in West Napa, we realize that we need that fire station. But when you start talking about long-term growth and outside of our ability to control, we can't restrict the building for this, we can't. So I'm sympathetic to that conversation when I was elected by the city and that's what my focus is. Although if I have a large brand, I will, you know, and so I see that, but again, further out, self-suppressing systems are putting in some of the larger ones.
Right. And that is a perfect question. That's a perfect question to be asking at this point where if I'm representing the city, I realize I have huge gaps in the city. I've got at least three or four stations that are going to need to go in there and that's going to make my response time okay. And the fire district commissioners are saying, it's taking you longer and longer to get out to service, but we're paying you almost $3 million a year to do it. We don't want these reduced levels of service. And one of the answers is go get Canyon County to have a conversation around these requirements of building. I will make no opinion about the feasibility of that option, but that is one option. Yes, that is a way that we might solve this. So keeping a pin in that for a moment, that that yes is exactly the kind of conversation we want to have. The next question is, well, let's just say we are just looking at it for within the city. If the city just builds the stations they need, they can keep their level of service consistent into the future? They won't annex anymore? They'll just stay within their city limits? Problem solved. District, deal with this on your own, which is a perfectly fine answer. What's the next problem? City council members? Councilmember Rodriguez? What is the other problem you have as a city council member?
We should note service.
Look at the screen because that's where the answer is to the question. Yeah, okay, that's the answer to the question. You might want to, oh, you can't scoot closer to her, but just lean over now and again. Make sure that you're, oh, psychic right here too. Okay, good.
However, that could be one answer. There are many answers.
Yes, there are many answers.
And so, granted, you talked about one of them.
Yes.
More money, more people, more development, more faith, more salary, more clip.
No, not really because I tuned you out a couple of seconds ago already. So, yes, let's stay with Councilmember Haverfield's question because let's just look at it within the city. I mean, that's really where a lot of the heat map was showing our problem. And as he said, we can put stations and we can staff those stations and have apparatus and that will solve this problem. That is exactly how we have to solve this problem and it does not need to be collaborative with another entity. The problem that Ozzy and I saw, me because I've been doing capital plans for the fire department for over 10 years and Station 6 was on the capital plan 10 years ago, as was 7. And Ozzy, going back and looking at just the way the budget for Nampa has continued to grow or not grow over the last 20 years, I said, well, this guy would say, we just haven't been able to get them built. Well, that's a complex question when you have a city that has lots of competing needs. Like last year, huge energy was put into the transportation needs of the community, explaining to the community how much money it was going to take to solve those problems. And that's just one other competing need, right? We want more police officers, parks, we have all these different things that we want to be able to have in a community. So I said, well, chief, just assume for a minute that you're not the most important thing, just put you aside. I said, Ozzy, can you look at the budget for all those years and help me figure out how the city might be able to just build these stations and staff them? Because then that's the end of the question, right? Just as you said, problem solved. Maybe? Ah ha, too many. Okay, now you really can't see this one, but I'm going to traipse myself over here behind Patrick so that he gets a chance on the television. There's this fancy chart in your packet where I said, okay, let's just look at it from the city. What stations are we going to need to put in to the city in order to manage the growth that we anticipate, where we anticipate it? We need 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 stations in the next 20 years. And that's just based on not only population but anticipated growth patterns. So here's the cost of the station and all of these are in today's dollars because I'm not psychic like the rest of many of you, so I just, we'll stick with today's dollars. And then I'm going to need to buy engines and tenders and brush trucks and all of that for all of these new stations. That's sort of doable because those are impact fee funds, right? So as growth is pulling their building permits, they're going to be putting extra into a fund balance to pay for these stations. No problemo. What is the problemo? I will give you another chance, Councilmember Rodriguez. What is the problem? You've got a station, you've got an engine, what do you not have?
Because we want to use impact fee first.
Because we want to use impact fees first.
He is an out-of-the-box thinker, yes. And Mr. Poncini and I say, "No, no, you cannot do that." Right?
That's right.
Yet you argue with me about that all the time, and so does Larry and Hubert, and I just pay them no mind. You can't do that.
Unfortunately, impact fees are covered by state.
Right, and they're only for buildings and apparatus. So it's really staffing. Well, how expensive could firefighters be, right? I mean, you just need three on an engine. How many shifts? Oh, so that's nine. And then, do they ever take vacation? Okay, so 12. So 12 people in a new engine. Are they in a union? Are they in a union? Are their salaries negotiated? Are they generally well-paid? They're comfortably well-paid. All you need is a million and a half to open a station every year. So I have to pay a million and a half every year of new money, unless I want to steal it from the police department, which is the perfectly fine option, right? Stealing it from other people. He's not going on record. See, get over here where you know you're on camera and all of a sudden people just clam up. Okay, this column is the problem right here because this is ongoing money. So it's 1.5 million, and then it's 1.5 million the next year. And then I put a new station in and it's now another 1.5 million, and it keeps compounding until, well, that's $90 million just in staffing commitment that I'm making to this problem. So yes, the obvious answer is just put the stations in. Whether you're the city or the district, I'm agnostic about that. Just put the stations in and the problem is solved. Well, it's going to cost a lot of money. And it's not just the staff, but it's the replacement of your existing equipment. Councilmember Rodriguez, can we replace equipment with impact fees? No. No, 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 but not replacement. You can buy new stuff. You can't replace the old stuff. Is there a risk of not replacing our old stuff? Yes, because then response time is horrible because you break down on the side of the road, and I don't know how long AAA takes for that, but it takes longer than four minutes for me. So, okay, we have $91 million to buy people and another $10 million to just replace the existing equipment and apparatus that we have. So in this big red circle is about $50 million worth of stations and apparatus that impact fees will pay for, and a little over $100 million of ongoing expenditures. If ongoing expenditures can't come from impact fees, where do they come from? Larry, that is actually the answer to the question. Taxpayers. Because you don't have, in the state of Idaho, an enormous number of different revenue sources, correct? And even though you're growing, even though we're adding all of these new people and new households, the fiscal impact analysis that we've done has said, "A new house doesn't always bring in enough new revenue to even cover the new costs." Like, this is where I bring Ozzy in again. I say, "Okay, Oz, can you just look at their historical ability to pay for new items, adding staff, and then can you model it out a little bit, like 20 years, and see what will happen?" We know, I know particularly having done strategic planning with councilmembers, what is one of the basic tenants that the Nampa City Council is known for in terms of, and Larry and Hubert, known for in terms of a very high value in the way the city is operated? What is one thing we do not like to do here? Yes.
Can I ask you a question? Is there a reason why you used a number of $8 million for a fire station?
Yes, there is a reason.
Is it that's to try to gain that much? Because that's a game stopper right there. We have such a hybrid play that tries for a facility. I don't know how big this facility is supposed to be. I assume it's around 20,000 square feet. Better fair number?
Ish. And I will give you the answer to that, that I put that number in based on, I help cities throughout the state build stations, and that is what they're spending on stations. We also know what the city of Meridian is looking at. So you could technically build whatever size station you want. You could build a shed. You could just bring in like portables if you wanted. So that column, that column for stations can be made larger or smaller, however you wanted to manage that. That unfortunately is not our property tax conversation. The property tax conversation is, just one second, Doug, is people. And the only way to change the cost of those people is to wrestle this man to the ground. Yes, Doug?
Just one thing to point out here, and I know that you're aware of this. You put everything in your, in today's dollars.
Yeah, I'm getting there, just a minute. Sheesh. Yes, that was my point about, we have psychic people right here and we have psychic people right here. I invited you to be part of their psychickness. I, however, am not psychic. I do not know what inflation will look like. I'm a little messed up by the last year in and of itself, let alone the last 10. So I always put things in today's dollars. Then I go to the smart man over here and I say, "All right, smart man, what's the word for making things from today's dollars to future dollars?" See, not everybody knows this, Ozzy. It's compounding. Yes. So that's when the smart man starts compounding things. Because I said, "Can't we just go with 100? I mean, it's a round number. It's big. It's really big. Just tell me if I can afford $100 million to get these stations staffed." Because I'm not even worried about getting them built or putting apparatus because that's growth's problem, right, Larry? You're asleep, I saw that. That is growth's problem. I just need to staff them, replace some engines now and again. Do I have, in the city of Nampa, the ability to either cut money from other departments or raise enough new money over 20 years? I won't even get into whether or not we put any of that new money to other people. Let's just see, can the city come up with $100 million in new money in $20, $20 to be able to staff these stations? And Ozzy, what was the answer? Yeah, see, he's kind of, he doesn't talk a lot. I mean, I just say, "Can it happen?" He says, "No." And then I say, "All right, I cannot go into a room with Councilmember Haverfield and just say no because I know this man and he actually asks questions." So I say, "Ozzy, you need to explain to me why this will not work." And he gives me an incredibly complicated spreadsheet, which we've spent a lot of time sharing with Doug and looking at, and we would be happy to give to any of you. But it seems a little overkill at this, at this point. That said, of course, the city can afford to staff all of these stations if you take the 3% every year and if you grow by 5% every year for 20 years and none of that new money goes to any other city service. This man gets every new dollar who comes, that comes into the city. I mean, that would have been a great place to stop because this has not been an easy project. We could just say, "Solved your problem. There you go. Just take all that new money, give it to Kirk, and you're done. Problem solved." And then the mayor kind of says things like, "Yeah, but we have other needs." To which I say, "That apparently is your problem and not mine because I'm just here to tell you what your capacity is." Frank, don't laugh at me. I will start beating up on you. I just have a good enough relationship with the mayor that I can do this, but it will probably be over soon, so. Okay. So it got to what I thought was the natural stopping place, which was, "I just need $100 million in today's dollars. Just show me how I can do it." And he did. Grow by 8% a year. Give all the money to fire. Problem solved. Okay, so then I stepped back and I said, "All right, just in case someone says that is not the most feasible way to go about it, let me step back and ask what my objectives are here. The number one objective is to maintain our current service level, response time, as we continue to grow, particularly with geographic spread. Being able to build the stations and staff them when necessary." But then we threw in some things, and you know, Ozzy and I were feeling kind of like rolling the dice. Ozzy's from Vegas, so he's often very risky. I said, "How about if we see if there's a way we can get all those stations and staff in place? No, no significant impact to the taxpayers. Net neutral. Let's just shoot for net neutral. Zero impact to the taxpayers. Also, I don't want any bad thing to happen to the city." Ozzy's starting to go like this as I'm giving him all these rules. And I say, "Also, anyone who lives in the city, I don't want them to notice any difference. They should have the same level of service, the same people, the same training. It should be seamless. Also, I want the solution to be able to be governed consistent with the values of the Nampa community. And I want this, this solution to also be able to continue to honor taxpayer sensitivity." It's just code, Larry, for you. Code for the last bullet is, keep Larry and Hubert from emailing me on the weekend. That's what the last bullet is. You know I'm right, don't you? Yes. It is. Actually, I, I look forward to your emails. I do. Okay, so this, this seemed like a real gnarly problem. Now Ozzy and I are getting kind of excited because this is what we do best, is gnarly problems. So, I said, "For these objectives, we have three options. Number one, accept longer response times. That is always an option. Anytime you're looking at municipal issues, the first question should be, 'Stop trying so hard.' The next question is, 'Just come up with the money. I've told you how to do it. You need 8% a year, put it all into the stations, check.'" Or number three, and this was obviously not something I came up with because it was a pre-existing idea, transition the delivery of those services to a different structure, which happens to be the district in this case. And the district is responsible for committing $100 million to get these stations in place and staffed. Okay, so of those three options, which one seemed realistic? I was pretty sure based on what the citizen survey said that your residents probably were not going to be interested in, well, if I wanted to be dramatic about it, more death and destruction. If I don't want to be dramatic about it, they're probably not be interested in having a long time to wait. Is there anyone in this room who recently placed a 911 call and had to wait a long time? It's your chance now, Larry. Yeah, I was going to say, you're already asleep. Mr. Olmstead called 911 and it took 20 minutes. And he, he's been telling me about it a lot, so I think he's a little upset. So, so I pretty much thought that longer response times was not going to be a good idea. And Ozzy and I kind of broached this idea with Doug. Like, could you, I mean, can you commit to 3% every year and 5%? Would you be willing to go to bat for just giving it to fire? He wouldn't really make eye contact. So I, again, I'm going to cross that out because I didn't think he wanted to go to bat for that. But still, always an option. We can bring that back. All right, so if I'm left with number three, and I'm going to give you all a break here in a minute, first I had to get my head around what that would even mean. We've done things like this in a lot of different cities, but not specifically a fire consolidation in southern Idaho. So I looked at what it would actually mean. What it actually means is that the fire department, which is already the service provider to the district residents, would, for lack of a better word, consolidate or merge with the district, becoming the district. In Idaho legal terms, it's actually called annexing. The district would annex the residents of Nampa just for the purpose of fire. That's what it really is. It would be the exactly same firefighters, same trucks, they would still say "Nampa Fire" on them, same customers. So if I'm the resident, I mean, if I'm Larry, he just really wanted someone to show up as his leg was pinned underneath him by the air conditioner unit. Am I right? That's probably a HIPAA violation, but I'm not a doctor, so I'm not going to get you in trouble for telling me about that. But it might feel good to him to know that the, the unit that showed up said "Nampa", and it was the firefighters that he may already know, and that everything was normal and the same because none of us really like change. We wanted everything to be normal and the same. The district's sole focus is maintaining this level of service. The city's sole focus, Councilmember G, do you ever feel somewhat overwhelmed by the purposes of being a city, managing a city, running a city? There's a lot of stuff. Do you ever feel like your bucket is very, very big? And are the people in the bucket screaming, "Me, me, me"? Yeah, okay. So one advantage of having a single-purpose district is that all they do is make sure that X happens. And in this case, X is stations are built and staffed, level of service stays the same. So, okay, how would this work out? The fire commission is currently three commissioners. Commissioner 1, Commissioner 2, Commissioner 3. Very able-bodied young men. They are going to probably have to go to five commissioners anyway after the census data comes in. If they were to annex, and it would be a much larger district by population anyway, there would be five district commissioners. And they would be elected by all of the people who get the services. So all the people in the district currently, plus anyone in the city of Nampa, would go to the ballot and elect their commissioners. Councilmember Bruner asked us a really important question this morning that bears an explanation. So as we're redistricting, the largest, you know, the largest population in this scenario would be the city. So I'm going to guess that probably three out of five of the new commissioners would probably be residents within the city, just looking at population. City taxpayers are assessed new property tax from the district. So Larry is going to see a, if this were to happen, Larry would see a decrease in his levy from the city of Nampa, and he would see a new line on his bill that said, "Nampa Fire District." That money would be moved there. District taxpayers still going to be assessed as normal. Okay. Now then we get into the, okay, but how would this really work? Like, right now, the fire department is served. All of their overhead services come from the city. Council, mayor, HR, payroll, fleet, IT, and a bunch of other really important things, I'm sure. So what could we do in the district? Well, the district can contract back to the city for the services that it wants. For example, fleet, no one on, you know, at, at a Bob's, a Bob's car repair shop is going to be able to repair a Pierce Arrow. They don't have that qualification. So it's probably worthwhile for the district to contract with the city for that service. But they might be able to manage their own payroll or manage their own HR, and they won't need a lot of things that they currently have, meaning, "I am sorry, but they will not need you, Mayor. They will not need the council office. They will probably not even need Amy. They just won't need a lot of the overhead that's required for a fully functioning city." One of the other things that, as we talked about, is really important is the fire marshal working with the building director. So we're giving all these building permits and we want to make sure that things are done to code and that the buildings are safe to begin with. Right now, you just send an email, same city email address, work is done. Amazingly, since I've done a lot of privatization work, Amazingly, since I've done a lot of privatization work, it is possible for the city to contract with the district to provide the exact same level of service for whatever actual cost they were already reimbursing the fire department anyway. Levy capacity. This is a bit complicated, so it will be one of the things we'll put a pin in if we want to discuss further. The city has all of this overhead cost, and they charge all of the departments in the city their proportional share. And as the fire department is one of the larger departments, they pay a large amount for their share of payroll and HR and all of these things, about $1.4 million. When we did our fiscal analysis, and again, this is not a policy decision to be made by us, it's to be made by elected officials, but just for giggles because there was that bullet that said, "Don't mess up the city," we left the $1.4 million in the city. We did not consider taking it with the fire district, with the fire department. And I'll come back to why that might be important, but the main takeaway is, I was afraid to mess up Doug's life, and that was a way that I could keep his life and the sanctity of the rest of the city intact. Union contract will just be negotiated with the district instead of the city. They are already employees of their own union, they are contracted to an entity. The Percy liability and the major acquisition program fund, this is probably getting into the weeds and you're not interested, but it's important because it's a very large liability and a growing chunk of money that has to do with retired firefighters moves over to be the district's problem. All the impact fee headaches move over to be the district's problems, although you'll keep your own headaches for your streets and police and parks. Okay, so this is just an explanation of what we're even talking about because I had to kind of give myself a scenario in order for Ozzy to build a budget. Okay. So Ozzy did whatever Ozzy does, and then Ozzy spent about a month explaining it to me, which is good. I mean, it's not good that I'm not brilliant in the whole Excel model kind of thing, but it's really good that I ask inane questions over and over and over again because when he can finally convince me, then I feel comfortable coming here. I am not going to put my integrity on the line to tell you that something works or doesn't work until I completely understand it. So this is the outcome. Remember, Ozzy first did a pro forma of 20 years of, "Could the city come up with $100 million?" Now I said, knowing all of these things about who would pay for the union, who pays for the overhead, et cetera, what would the outcome 20 years if we were in a different structure, the district, look like? And the answer is that a consolidated district can fund continuation of current operations, five new stations in 20 years, all the apparatus for those stations, all the new staffing for those stations, and all the apparatus replacement with a slight, let's just say, zero, with no tax impact to city residents and a slight tax impact to district residents, maybe 10, mostly $20 swing. Positive net fiscal impact on the city's operating budget because we didn't take the $1.4 million to the district. We left it with the city, in case you have other problems that you need to solve. We just took $100 million burden away from the city, too. Councilmember Rodriguez, yay! Okay. No bond levy necessary. I don't know about you, but I have a really hard time with my clients getting bond levies passed for fire stations. So we assumed that would never even be an option. Cash reserves to survive economic downturns. I didn't just ask him to look at a model that would break even. I wanted a model that would get us through whatever next apocalypse is coming because it seems like they're going to keep coming. Okay, so here's what I asked, is, "Ozzy, I don't get it. How could the district do this if the city cannot do this? It makes no sense." He sighed, rolled his eyes, chuckled a little bit like an uncle, and said, well, he said it over and over and over and over again until I got it to this point. Anyone ever thought that the Idaho state tax laws are a little funky, complicated? Little bit. The formulas are set to work in a certain way. And when you move some of the levers of those formulas, sometimes surprising things happen. So right now, sales tax in the state, there's a bucket for the cities, there's a bucket for fire and highway districts, special purpose districts, and there's a bucket for other people that aren't important right now. So if we were to take the district, the fire department, out of the city and move it to the district, it's not going to change the amount of sales tax that the city gets because sales tax is distributed on population. You didn't lose any population, you just got rid of Kirk, which, pretty good idea. All right, so you're fine, you got all your sales tax. So I just assumed that the sales tax will just move over, and Ozzy says, "But no, there's an extra half a million dollars in sales tax." I said, "That's ridiculous. Why would that be? That cannot be." He said, "It's because we just added the whole population of Nampa to this district," which now made the Nampa Fire District one of the bigger districts in the state of Idaho. So that bucket for districts, which was being apportioned by population, now has to be reapportioned. And Ozzy, I actually said, "Did you actually talk to the tax commission?" "Yes. I saw the emails myself, it has been proven. They have done the formula to C." Does anyone lose out on this plan? Because I'm like, yay, half a million dollars, that's great. And then I stopped and said, "Who gets hurt by this? Does anyone know who gets hurt?" It's ACHD, which personally, well, I won't say anything. Anyway, all of the other districts are going to have to see a little bit of change. Ozzy's done the calculation, the biggest impact would be to ACHD since they're the largest single-purpose district, and it is not an amount that even would really show up in their budgetary practices. Okay, so we got a half a million dollars, new money, sales tax. $1.7 million, new money, property tax. Now, Larry and I had this conversation throughout the weekend where I explained this multitudes of ways, and I think your end answer was, "I don't get it, I'm not sure I believe you, but I will hold on this." That was kind of your answer, right? Yes. Doug, we'll let Doug tell us what the real answer is. Well, Doug and Ozzy know that the property tax formula is not as simple as one would think. It's not just moving people over and they're paying the exact same tax. I cannot explain this. Ozzy, you're going to have to come up to the mic. I'll just give you the mic. And remember to do it in the simple way, the simplest way possible.
Okay, so the way the levy and property values work is if, just to keep things simple, assume the city's budget goes unchanged from one year to the next year, and the only thing that changes is the property values. As property values go up, levy rate goes down. That's just the way the math formula works. It's property tax divided by property values is the levy rate. So you have the city levy rate, and you have the district levy rate. In the city, the property values increased faster than they did in the district over the last couple of years, and that's kind of been historic. So what happens is, the levy rate, your property values, which is the formula for when this annexation were to occur, it's the city's property values multiplied by the district's levy rate. So when this perfect storm, you have high property values and higher levy rate. When you multiply this by this, you get additional revenue. That's the money that we're talking about, the 1.7. That's why the Nampa, or the, I'm sorry, the district taxpayers pay slightly more. They pay about $20 more per home than the city would because we're holding the city side net neutral, but we can't do that on the district side because we can't control how that formula gets applied. It's state law. So it'll be higher property value, higher levy rate generates additional income.
So Ozzy, if there's a higher property value and a higher levy rate, how come people aren't paying more? Higher and higher should equal higher.
That's why I said the Nampa people do.
Oh, I wasn't listening to. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, you are right. We will defer to Doug and his team to do all of their calculations as well. And this is, you know, not the first time we've shared this information, but it keeps needing to be confirmed and recalculated, so finance will clearly do that. Then in addition to this additional revenue, there are what I say to be a reduction in administrative costs, and I don't want to give you the impression that this is an efficiency. It's not doing things better. It's just that, first of all, the fire department does not need the mayor or the council or maybe Amy, so they were paying for a share of overhead that they just won't need in the district anymore. They were also paying for overhead that was sized to meet a $50 million city with a great breadth of service levels. They might only need one attorney on contract instead of a larger contracted. Nothing against you, you're asleep back there anyway. Wow, you should really look at his contract because I think he's playing games. You're not. I was just digging at you, but you missed it, and so that's great, it's a good strategy. IT, for example, so the city's been paying IT. Again, the IT budget just gets distributed out to all of the users, not always on an hour-by-hour basis because that's actually really expensive to do. So would you have a general proportionality? Well, they may be able to buy IT services in the private sector, relieving city IT of the burden of having to deal with them because, man, are they high maintenance. And then having to have a little bit more control of the costs that they pay. Sitting down with all of the internal service departments, so all of fleet and IT and all of these people, we talked with them about if we were no longer within the city proper but collaborated with the city, how much would it cost? We could contract with this, you could contract with that. And essentially, it was about $700,000 worth of savings there. So you add these things up, half a million dollars, $1.7 million, $700,000 in savings, and that's $3.4 million a year. And yes, $3.4 million a year times 20 does not equal 100. But the district has been taking their 3% every year, and 4% growth is a reasonable number. Compounded, and that's that fancy word about $20, $20 to real dollars in the future, is $95 million. And Ozzy's going to pitch in the other five to make it $100 million. He'll write a check. Okay. Yes.
Can you, the math I did on that, is it 7% compounded? No, it's only, it's, I should have caught that. It's between 1% and 2% on the growth.
Okay.
So it's 3, 1 and 2. Yeah, 7 would be much greater than 90.
Oh, 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 sorry. It was 2. It was 2.
You were absolutely right, because I was going to make the comment, so you copied.
Okay, we're good.
2% growth. We compounded everything.
So that was the net difference?
Yes.
Right. What I'm explaining is that this is just the simplest way to show how big the problem is, and in the simplest way, in $20, $20, it's $100 million. But yes, it did need to be compounded, and really, the behind-the-scenes analysis that Ozzy has done has taken all of the existing operations of the fire department, continued to increase staffing for existing firefighters as the union negotiations have trended over time, have continued to have increases in fuel or, you know, natural ongoing increases, and then assumed that, yes, we would be building these stations, whatever cost the stations were and the apparatus, impact fees would continue to be ratcheted up to be able to recover those. Well, I did not increase the cost of, I can't see. I did not increase or compound the cost of new staffing, I just kept adding 1.5 million. He did. So in Ozzy's back-of-house model, he has taken everything, taken all of the revenue formulas, worked them out with the tax commission and the county assessor's office, including revenue that would come, currently, the building department pays the fire marshal for plan review, so that revenue would still continue via contract. And then on the expenditure side, it was the same kind of compounding that you would see in the city.
So I'm going to run through a couple of little things. So when you're saying, "Let's take the $700,000 reduction in administrative costs," that is a savings to the fire district for your spending costs, I agree with that. On the city side, that reflects costs that we either would have to cut. Now, I know, hang on, I know what he is saying.
He knows, he's just leading up to it.
Either we would have to cut or it's part of your assumption that you're leaving the $1.4 million of money within us, terrible's cost. Now, the problem with that is that $1.4 million of money you're leaving within us actually reflects an increase in taxation within the city because we're moving the fire district out of the city, leaving $1.4 that I didn't have before, which actually...
I would call it double dipping. I would call it double dipping, that yes, we're moving those services over to the district and having the district pay for them, but leaving the revenue over here. This is a little, basically, sometimes when things get really uncomfortable, I just move them off to the side. And Doug makes me really uncomfortable, so I just move this off to the side, knowing that if I took his whole $1.4 million, the district was even going to look better, but he would be very, very unhappy because you cannot just cut $1.4 million of overhead in the first year and not have horrible implications in terms of internal services to the rest of the departments. So basically, what I did is I left the $1.4 million in your bank account, and then very piously walked over here and said, "Technically, it's double dipping if you keep all of that money, and we also make them pay for it here, but you do what you want to do." And then, yes, that's a big policy issue that the council would need to work through.
Well, from a budget perspective, we're allowed to do that in whatever case we chose.
Totally, yes.
Yeah. It's up to the council aside and the mayor, what a public level that will be in terms of our budgetary process, but I just wanted to call that out. And in order to make this financially work in the city, we could increase in levy rate to cover the cost.
Right.
That the district or the fire department's role over the term within our system.
And you have sort of a range between reduce your levy by that amount and look fantastic to Larry and Hubert, keep all of the money and reappropriate it to bettering the services that you probably already have some opportunities to make better for all of your city and departments, or use that money on other strategic priorities, or somewhere in the middle, because you can't just push the lever in one day. It may be a phased approach of kind of weaning ourselves, you know, really figuring out where that capacity is, cutting costs a little bit as we go, taking some of this money toward these strategic priorities. I got Gene first and then you, just second, Hubert. Yes, that is this thing we're going to put a pin in because it's a big conversation.
And just, I know you're going to answer quick. This is one of the pieces that would be addressed as you are going through that final L2 and budget creation as part of the annex. You can make that decision, that's one of the last-minute decisions, actually, you make it through this whole process, is the decision, do we take it all, do we hold some? It's your budget bill for that next year is when that bridge would be crossed.
Councilmember G.
At what case, the new stations being built, and there's five projected over 19, 20 years, about three?
So six would be next year. We kind of plugged them in as the staff told us they were needed, so it was six in '21, seven in '24, eight in '28, nine in '23, et cetera, so every three-ish for years. The cash flow model shows that there would be enough money to add that staff on those years. So in each of those years, we put in the assumptions of the station being built and the staffing being added, and we watch the bottom line. And there are some years where the bottom line looks like it dips a little bit, but then there are other years where there are significant fund balance. So evening it out, yes, it was cash positive all the way across, assuming all those things happened when we want them to happen.
And I ask that because there's probably people who, I would assume, in the city feel like both our fire department, you know, everybody's fire department, we all pay. And so when they sort of see that ROI, is it really important because we've been way behind and we couldn't even fall behind to be able to fund this?
Well, unfortunately, people won't notice the ROI until they have to be the person to call, right? Normal people will never know whether it's getting faster or better. But I guess anecdotally, I would say, the minute six is in the ground, we stop the hemorrhaging of the response time. Right, right. Yes. And every time you add another 10,000 people, you're talking about another station. And we were, you know, looking at 70,000 people over that 20-year period. So we're plugging in those stations. That cadence is completely fiscally possible.
That's the point. It's fiscally possible whether, you know, if you wanted to do something earlier, there are other funding alternatives that you could make a station come in earlier. But then there's a whole other amount of work that would have to be done to be able to justify.
It can be funded, yes. It also has to be managed. But from the pro forma, it's manageable. You could lease the stations, you could build them, you could go into a collaborative, you know, someone was talking about kind of just doing one design for a station so that you're not trying to repeat this process every time, so, yeah. Hubert, let's take one more question, and then I want to take a pause, let you go to the bathroom if you need to, and then ask questions because I want to be conscious of your time.
We actually have another meeting after this one, so we will probably need to adjourn out the city council.
Okay. Awesome, okay. Hubert, you still have a question?
Well, in your pardon, I'm really having a hard time with this $700,000 reduction in administrative costs. Your pardon, it doesn't work very good on that, okay, in fact, in 20 years, that's $14 million. So let me put it another way. If a larger district can save $700,000 in administrative costs, our department now being overcharged.
No, remember I said that the fire department is paying for a broad range of overhead, including the mayor's office, the council's office, the PIO, economic development. There's all sorts of services. The district would not need all of the services simply because they don't belong to the fam, I don't want to say that, but how about this? How about I explain this to you one-on-one? I will do that to maximize the time. Plus Larry knows the answer because that was also part of the email.
When you explain one-on-one to me against the $1.7 million in property tax.
Yes.
And you've got X number of individuals in the city now, and you've got X number of individuals in the district, and you put them together.
Yes.
You've got the same number of people you do now, but somewhere you're coming up with 1.7.
You're right. You're right. Because the council, because the council members have to leave to go to another meeting, I'm going to hold that conversation because we can continue to dig down on that with you as much as you need. You are always invited to our conversations, yes. How many minutes do you have as council?
If we need to have under 10 minutes, I just don't want to take a break.
Okay, no break. 10 minutes. Questions from council members first because we can be here for as long as we need for everyone else. Large questions, ones that need specific explanations like financial pro forma piece, that will be your next conversation. If there was no interest in going any farther than this tonight, then we don't need to explain all of the intricacies of the financial model. If there is interest in continuing to explore this, we anticipate another briefing meeting, preliminary meetings with Doug again to bring him up to speed with some of this before they come back to you. So council members, what are some, have you thought of questions? Have we thought of this, have we thought of this? And if you don't want to ask them out loud, please write them down and give them to me because I want to spend time answering your questions and getting back to the full council.
I just want to clarify, can I spend an hour and a half with you? Keep talking to your board over all these issues. So I don't have any for the group here because I don't understand the concept.
Were we cogent in the way we explained it to you? Fancy word. Did it make sense what we said? Okay.
And I believe you could explore this a little bit.
Okay. Other council members. Now, we don't have the full council here, but council member Levi, do you have any initial thoughts, questions?
I have questions, but I think the council, I think there are a lot of questions.
Okay, perfect, we'll look forward to those. Council member, have her phone.
Thank you for your time. I've spent a long, long time talking for several years that I've been involved with. So can you turn it back for me as a city councilman with the city of Nampa? Where's the benefit to the city residents if we expand? Because there are going to be lots of service. It doesn't sound like it, but currently, we have the highest insurance rating in the state. That's important because that's less dollars that residents are paying because we have that insurance rate. If our focus is on the city limits and billing, where we have our fire marshals, instead of going to city limits, then we're doing the service that we need to by focusing on hotspots and acknowledging the cities. Fire Station Number Six has been a popular conversation for a long time. I appreciate the quality and nature of those working within the district. I think that's important because they are our users. But again, when it comes down to trying to convince Marion, Willard, and others, it wasn't that, but changing what is already is a very long investment scale. We take pride in that. We've been very fortunate, we've got such a strong root in people and leadership. So again, for me, it comes down to you have to convince me so that I can sell it to you. Right now, to see what we have is something that's very special that needs to be enhanced. And that's where my focus is, expanding beyond right now. I think it will naturally, we have the Bible stories because we're going to be focusing on the areas around the city that are one of those hotspots and are gatherings. And when we do that, and go to all the counties, we're going to be acting on that. This is a conversation that's clear to us. When you start talking about controlling growth, and it's outside our city limits, we can't control that. It's just unless it's in the area of impact, we really don't have much of a say. So the Camden County Commissioners, Camden County, I don't know. Need to be involved in the conversation so that it's collaborative effort on all parts to the betterment of our value at the same time.
Wonderful. Councilmember.
So I work in healthcare. So we are talking minutes, seconds, literally saving lives and judging. And so when I think about the growth that we continue to improve, because people want to live out, we're about to get.
How many of the next five stations are in the city limits? Trying to figure out this answer.
My daughter, when she was one, fell down our stairs and, what, knocked out and stopped breathing. Didn't quite know what to do, know what to do with me. So when Jeff came too, because they fell down the stairs, he said, drive. We'll get there faster than they can get to us. So he knew in 2008 that we had a gap. And so he chose to bundle our baby in the car and drive like heck to a hump. So we're 12-plus years out from that. We still have the same problem with way more people. And so I have a hard time, coming from a council perspective, continuing to approve growth when we know that literally we're putting lives in property errors. And that, to me, is where the rubber hits the road. And we have a responsibility to really look at what saves lives and what saves property. And if we continue to promote growth, we have to know that what it takes to sustain that growth, sometimes incur and give us a little less control. It's the right thing to do if it's what we continue to promote, that's my thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
Because this is a special council meeting, I need to stand for a motion to adjourn into executive session. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And the action item is to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061 to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent wherein the respective qualities of the individuals are to be evaluated in order to fulfill a particular vacancy or need. So I just needed to officially do that. So we will be meeting in city council chambers. And so this team is ready to go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you.
Appreciate it.
So Chief Davis, do we want to just announce our quick bit? Because the commission is on here, do we still need to stay virtual?
It is the regular means of the party. It's both as virtual and live.
So we can stop the?
So I think what I'm hearing is we can